Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October 26 Town Council meeting. We will begin with the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence for our men and women serving in March West.
Be justice for all.
Thank you all. We will begin with our roll call.
Mr. Yakuza?
Here.
Ms. Abbott?
Yeah.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Mr. Capstone?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Right here.
Here. Okay, so just a little housekeeping before we get started. Again, welcome everyone who's attending virtually. For those of you that are online through the Zoom process, you can indicate there's a little hand at the bottom to raise your hand. If you're calling in on a phone, it's star six will mute and unmute your phone. Star nine will allow us to indicate that you have your hand up for a question. When called upon, please state your name and address for our secretary, for our clerk. And with that, we will get going. President's a gift, executive session, executive summary. Right at tonight's meeting, we did have an executive session, potential litigation. No votes taken during that session. We will be moving on now to our consent agenda. We have bills.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Yakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capstone?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And next we'll be sitting as the Board of License Commissioners. Public hearings, liquor license applications, class BV beverage license for VVD LLC. This is the Mindy's 3351 East Main Road.
Move to approve the public hearing and set the date for November 23rd, or is that too soon?
Now, this is the public hearing.
Oh, this was the public hearing. Sorry, my bad.
That's okay. Do you have any questions? I was just gonna ask if there were any questions, comments. I didn't see any.
Motion to approve the liquor license application as presented.
Seconded.
I think we have to close the public hearing first, don't we?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So Kevin has to ask his three questions. It's kind of like Seder.
Well, isn't it? I only have one question. I'm assuming this falls outside of Mr. Crosby, but I'm assuming this falls outside the 200-foot buffer away from a school.
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Mr. Yakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Capstone?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero, move to public hearing, and now on to...
Move to approve the application for liquor license for 888 Restaurant doing business as Mindy's. The class BV beverage license, my apologies.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Mr. Yakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Capstone?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next we have minutes from our October 13th meeting.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
For adjourned as the board of licensed commissioners.
Oh. Motion to adjourn as the Board of License Commissioners.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mr. Yakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Capstone?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, we're gonna reset here. On to our minutes. On to minutes from our October 13th meeting.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Yakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capstone?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next we have tax vouchers. It's request approval for tax vouchers 2020-1026-01 to 2020-1026-2.
Both to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mr. Yakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capstone?
Aye.
Dr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. On to our town administrator's report.
Good evening, Mr. President. Town council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to COVID, just need to remind everybody that the state is still in phase three. So it is important for everyone to continue to adhere to the Department of Health COVID guidelines. Please continue also to monitor our COVID webpage, which is amended every Wednesday. Of note, the governor is urging everyone to get tested, especially those who regularly work or congregate in close quarters with others in a business or work environment. More information is on our website, but it is simply a matter of going to portal ri.gov to schedule an appointment. Portal ri.gov. Additionally, the governor is asking everyone to cancel Halloween parties and has requested police presence to increase enforcement of Department of Health guidelines. Trick or treating is permissible in small groups with face coverings, not the regular traditional mask. You can wear those, but go have to wear the mask underneath any costume. And it is encouraged that trick or treating be completed before dark. Please go to the town website for information regarding safe Halloween themed activities and additional guidance, including the Recreation Department's All Treats No Tricks Drive Thru Event on Friday, October 30th at the Brown House from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the Portsmouth Police Department Trick or Treat Drive By Event on Halloween Day, October 31st at the Portsmouth Police Station from 12:00 in the afternoon till 4:00. With respect to the implementation of our new finance software, the school department has now migrated from our legacy financial system to the new financial software, and they're up and running. On the town side, all modules, with the exception of fixed assets and heat procurement, have been implemented. We will continue to operate in parallel with the legacy software, and we anticipate a full transition to be completed sometime February. I'd like to announce that Mary Ann Remo is stepping down as the Chair of the Portsmouth Prevention Coalition. And in her place, the Coalition has elected Jean Collins as their new chair. Jen grew up in Portsmouth and is a Portsmouth parent. She has volunteered for great school groups, and we're excited to start working with her. I'd also like to acknowledge the hard work of Mary Ann and thank her for her selfless service in Portsmouth. Last week, we took delivery of the fire department's new boats. I don't know if we have a picture of that that you can throw up on. Fire department personnel will be testing the boat and are conducting training for the next couple of weeks. The boat will be placed in full service by the second week of November. Lastly, the town has been awarded a grant of up to $51,000 under the Take It Outside Initiative. Eligible expenses may include the cost affiliated with purchasing, obtaining, delivering, installing, or otherwise enabling the use of items and goods and services for board December 18th that are necessary to increase the town's outdoor opportunities. This includes help to restaurants and other enterprises and recreational events. As soon as the formal agreement is executed with the Rhode Island Department of Commerce, the town will start accepting proposals from eligible entries, entities, I'm sorry. Please contact our Director of Business Development, Rich Chilinski, for further information. Mr. President, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Remo. If we move on, I see that there is a question up. I really haven't discussed anything, so I just want to... Reservations and appointments? So, and then... Okay, all right, so, well, we'll move on to the reservations and appointments, and then we'll pick comments. Okay, on to resignations and appointments for the Housing Authority. There are three vacancies, and we have three applications.
And we've not had any other ones come in.
I do know that there, I've been informed that this person does have a comment, so let me entertain a comment or question. Hello, is this Bonnie Nordbein?
Yeah, muted.
Just gonna need to unmute yourself? Hello, Bonnie? If you could, okay, we got you. Hello? Did it go away?
No, I don't want you to look at analysis, so we can see her, she has a video on.
Should it, okay. Bonnie? Okay. All right, so, got the panel?
I have to get on the phone.
Bonnie, do you have a question, or can you unmute?
They're not there at all.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
I know, there she is.
Okay.
I apologize. I just want to, I just want to make sure that this is so important tonight to get Senator Sandy on this board. We've had so many problems here, and we just really support him being with, you know, in tune with us and to be here with us to help us out. It's been just a big problem, and that's basically what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to approve Mr. Gary Gump, Mr. Jim 70, and Ms. Terry Cortraven to the Housing Authority.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Yakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Capstone?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. On to whole business number one. Our first item is the National Grid, Quinnic Island Town Council briefing. And we have with us Brian Schuster from National Grid. Can you hear us?
Good evening. Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Edit videos.
Okay. So, thank you, everyone, for giving us the opportunity to discuss not only our operations over at Old Mill Lane, which I know there are a lot of questions regarding that winter operations, but equally our long-term energy solutions study that we recently presented at Open House to the public that is also available via our website. Before we get in, I am joined by my colleague, who is our manager for the area, Jacque Ponzio. Jacque, just want to check, make sure you can hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Brian. Thank you. Hi, everyone.
Great, great. So as I said, I'm Brian Schuster. I'm the Director of Customer and Community Management for the State of Rhode Island for National Grid. And we are here to walk through a few slides, but I know there are quite a few pending questions that I'm hopefully going to address before we get the opportunity to get into the Q and A section. Whoever's advancing the slides, if you want to move to the next slide, please? So the first, the first section I'm going to talk about is our current plan for the upcoming winter operations over at Old Mill Lane. And if you can please advance to the next slide? So just as a reminder, our operations at Old Mill Lane is currently set up to be a temporary facility to inject what would be converted from liquid natural gas into natural gas into the pipeline system if it's so deemed necessary. I'm going to talk a little bit about the conditions that we're currently operating in, why we need this site, and a few other slides, but I just want to highlight that this is a temporary facility, and really the timeline that we have set up for the use of the site, I'll cover in the next slide. I will highlight that last year we did the same operation, and there's really no change from last year other than we put in a few additional mitigating sound and lighting factors that I'll also address. But basically, the timeline of the operation is such that we will be essentially setting up the site next month. If you wanted to advance to the next slide, this will help outline the timeline. So essentially, we've already begun some of the site preps, which requires us to put in some ground matting and some additional fencing and the like. We did install a new electrical service this year, and the whole purpose of that is to reduce what we used to have as a generator on site so that electrical service will eliminate the need for ongoing generation, if you will. We will still have a generator on site for backup purposes. November, we'll begin to stage our equipment. The equipment will arrive really in the third week of November. We have a contract through Stabilis that delivers the equipment. All of the equipment is delivered, I'll say, void of any fuel, so our storage tanks, our vaporizers, our odorizing equipment and the like is all brought onto site, set up before we inject any LNG into the storage facility, if you will. At the very end of November is when we'll do all of our system testing and essentially make the site operational by December 1st. We do look at the forecast as a big factor in regards to when we think we may begin to use the site or have a need for the site. So we'll be making our first LNG deliveries to the site once we have a forecast for cooler temperatures, which usually by the second week of December, at least based on last year, is when we'd expect to have our first deliveries to bring LNG on site. And then it would be staged and stored there for the remaining of the winter. And as seen on the slide here, we will be demobilizing the site once the winter is completed, which is usually around the April 1st timeframe. So let me, there are a few topics that I'd just like to address that have come up either from our open house or from some of the local residents regarding the operation overall. And the first is the overall onsite noise and lighting. So as I indicated, we already, one of the, we're continuously looking at operations to mitigate further noise, but one of the things we did is put in an electrical service. We are also doing some additional testing and some engineering analysis on some of the venting operations that we have to conduct on site. So one of the requirements for us is to do occasional tank venting, if you will, and that's just a normal maintenance item. But we are, we are going through some of the engineering, and I should say that process of venting a vapor from a tank can be pretty loud. So one of the things we're putting in place is to absolutely only do that venting of vapor, you know, during normal weekday hours, during normal business hours, if you will, so not on weekends and the like. It's something you can plan and account for, but we are further looking at an opportunity to do less of that by venting internally into the system. So really, it's called a vapor recovery mechanism that we're fairly, we have to go through a process engineering and approvals to make sure we can, we can conduct that without any harm to the system. So that would further reduce noise on the site, and these are just the types of examples that we're continuously trying to find means to reduce noise. We did put up, and well put up, we have temporary fencing that goes around the site. We put up some additional trees and so forth around, shrubs around the sites for aesthetics purposes. Of course, some of that takes time to grow in, but as I've indicated, we're always trying to find more means of reducing that kind of impact to the local area. The last thing I'll mention is the lighting. You know, we do have, they are pretty bright lights. They need to be bright because of security purposes. We want to make sure we can very visibly see all the equipment 24/7. And we do have security staff on site 24/7, as well as operating personnel on staff on site 24/7. But we are looking at ways that we can put in some shrouds around the lights so that it directs all the light just onto the site and mitigates that, you know, that background or light noise, if you will, outside of the site. But it's pretty much unavoidable to completely darken the site, if you will, for safety purposes. So those, there've been a lot of questions around, again, the noise and the sound, and we're doing everything again. And we'll take further recommendations from our local area residents who we know are very concerned about the noise and lighting. Another common question that comes up very often is in regards to, you know, safety protocols and procedures. And we work very closely, not only with Portsmouth, but the other Equinick Island communities on making sure that we've connected closely with the fire departments and helped establish appropriate safety protocols and procedures for the community. Now, of course, internally within the site, we have our own safety processes and procedures. We are, we are inspected both and planned and unannounced by our, the Division of Public Utilities and Carriers. They are the, really the position of authority over the site. And, and, and again, all of those safety processes and procedures, we work in close conjunction with the fire departments. Couple other things we also do, and as Chief Ford can attest, we are, we are sending some of your fire department personnel to our, to LNG firefighting school just to have that additional training. That's actually being conducted in November, and we're actually looking for a second opportunity for department personnel in December, just again, to give that additional safety and proactive awareness around the operations of LNG. You know, and the next topic that a lot of folks and residents have concerns around are the trucking itself. You know, getting the trucks in and out of the property. And certainly, we understand that. We understand that there are concerns about what could happen if there was an accident and so forth. And all of that LNG trucking, which we get from a third party, National Grid doesn't actually, you know, our distribution company, our gas company, doesn't actually deliver the fuel. One of our affiliates is one of the contractors that could be contracted to deliver the fuel, but there are other LNG delivery companies as well. All of those companies have to meet very firm and strict regulations. They have to file hazmat safety permits to be able to travel with RIDOT. There are other regulations that they have to abide by, and if anybody really needs to get the details of all the different regulations and parameters that come from the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration or the National Fire Protection Administration, you know, we can, we can find that, or we can provide that info, or at least connect, connect you to those companies that can demonstrate all of those requirements that must be met for our, for our delivery. But more importantly, we will also provide all of the details and the routes, which would be the same route we used last year, when deliveries occur and so forth, so that, so both the police and fire departments, both in Portsmouth and Middletown, have that information so that they know when the deliveries are going to be made, and they know the route that will be used to safely deliver those, with the product, if you will. So again, I know there's been a lot of questions around that, and we will continue to work closely with the communities to ensure that any of those safety concerns are addressed as appropriate. The other thing I'll just briefly touch on is we've had questions on, you know, there's this question about our petition that we filed recently with the Energy Facility Siting Board. And as most folks may know, or if you're, if you've vested interest in the topic, the Energy Facility Siting Board is a quasi judicial tribunal that oversees the construction, the siting, and the alteration of major energy facilities. You know, the typical example is a power plant. And they are, they are a branch, if you will, from the regulatory authority that we do a report to for this sort of operation. And two years ago, we notified the EFSB that we are intending to put Old Mill Lane in operation for a contingency for the entire island in case of a capacity or vulnerability type of issue on the transmission pipeline. We approached them, you know, seeking clarity around their oversight of the operation. And really, what we've done and what they did, they gave us a two-year waiver and really asked us to come back with a petition of, you know, our position on what set of oversight they, that, you know, we felt they should have over this type of operation. So, so folks have seen that we filed that petition. There is a docket created. And again, this was all the request of the EFSB, and our position is that, you know, temporary operations such as this don't need that extra oversight from EFSB. You know, this is a temporary operation, and we would like to keep it temporary and as short as possible overall. And it takes several months to do a filing for these types of operations, which really, we don't believe is in the intent of the EFSB. But at the end of the day, our petition is simply to ascertain and get clarification on oversight from the EFSB regarding temporary LNG operations. We do operate temporarily in other areas. And this year, currently in Rhode Island, we don't have necessarily a, an exact duplicate of this type of temporary operation. We are doing similar types of operations such as Old Mill Lane and our neighboring affiliate in Massachusetts, both in Cape Cod and up in Norwell, or Norwood, Massachusetts. So, so, you know, we are, we are practiced, this is a very routine type of operation for us. It's not necessarily, it's the second year we're doing it in this fashion for Equinick Island, but I'll talk about why we have to do that here in a couple other slides. The other, the last topic I want to just touch on at this point, you know, there's a lot of public interest in, you know, why we aren't conducting such an operation via our property that we have leased on the Navy base. So the Navy base lease that we have only allows an operation to be conducted, I'll call it, for peak shaving purposes. And peak shaving purposes are when you know you have a forecasted scenario, when you're going to have a high demand day, which in this case for natural gases, when it's really cold in your forecasting that there could be unusually high demand on the system that you would send in on a planned agenda, some additional injection into the system with LNG, if you will. And that operating agreement with the Navy allows us to do that on occasion. It does not allow us to have unrestricted 24/7, three, three and a half to four months, a kind of permanent staging and continual contingency, and that's why we're not set up to do this sort of operation on the Navy base. We did try... We did try and we approached the Navy to try to alter that lease in that operating agreement, um, but it was denied at the federal level. Um, and the other, the other big challenge for us overall is, you know, um, the lease that we have on the base does expire in twenty-twenty-six. Um, and the Navy's already given this indication that they do not intend to extend that lease. They have other plans for that leased property. But I'll talk a little bit about um, some of the additional work we're doing with the Navy um, in a collaborative fashion for some al- some alternatives, if you will. But the Navy base is, is um, ultimately it's a challenge because of that restriction and operating agreement. And, and secondly, um, you know, the injection of natural gas onto the island happens right adjacent to this property at Old Mill Lane. The, the, it's our take station, or actually it's um, Enbridge's take station from which we get our natural gas. Um, and hydraulically, um, the injection point for us is, is optimum at this point. It gives us the ability to completely serve the entire island um, unrestricted from this location. That's why we initially cited um, this um, backup contingency, if you will. All right, so let's talk a little bit, um, move on to the next slide, please. And I'm sure there'll maybe other questions on, on Operation Old, at Old Mill Lane. But I think if, if I give a little context of really what, what, what is our path forward? Um, and that's really what we're looking for feedback from the community, from different stakeholders and, and, and community organizations and so forth. And we do have a website that has um, a recently published long-term capacity study. And if anybody had joined our open house, we covered um, those, the kind of high-level uh, alternatives and options that we're looking for. And I'm going to cover those here shortly in a few slides. Um, but the bottom line is we, we do not have, you know, a predetermined solution. This is completely up to um, the voice of the community uh, as far as a path forward. Every solution has its pros and cons. Uh, and, and certainly um, e- every solution has its own challenges, overall, I'll just say. Um, and, and you'll see that highlighted as we move through the, the slides here. So let me um, go ahead and go to the next slide, please. A few kind of high-level, first of all, um, just kind of declarations, I'll say, you know, we, we, uh, with all of the, the outline that we have here, um, we are trying to solve basically two key challenges. Um, right now we have a gas capacity constraint, um, meaning we, we, we could actually have not enough supply on the coldest day of the year um, um, that our system is designed for. So we do these design days where we, we um, through a, a variety of formulas, we predict when, what could be the maximum capacity. Um, and even on those extremely cold days, um, currently, we do have a, a, a capacity constraint. Um, the other um, challenge we have is, and obviously um, a year and a half ago with the gas outage we, we experienced in Middletown and Newport, um, if we have any sort of upstream issue or on our transmission system, we are vulnerable. Um, so, so the vulnerability is aside from the capacity in that we rely on one single pipe to transmit this gas into, uh, into the island. And if there's any sort of disruption, whatever it may be the cause, um, we don't have a contingency for that. And this, this LNG kind of operation at Old Mill Lane currently provides that, that backup um, capacity uh, contingency, if you will, both for vulnerability and, and capacity itself. I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that if I'll move to the next slide. Please. This kind of just maps um, kind of the, in, in a pictorial way, where, where we sit. And you can see that sort of dotted yellow line, that's, that's the gas pipeline capacity. That's the transmission capacity that we currently have um, coming into the island from our, our transmission energy supplier. And you can see um, our kind of predicted um, design day peak usages. Um, so for twenty-twenty-one, you could see our actual peak demand could be above that transmission capacity. Now, I will say that, that capacity design day is, you know, it, it's the coldest day possible. It's an average of negative three degrees over a, a, a time period. And, and the, the um, I'll say that the amount of times that could possibly occur is pretty low. It's actually um, one in like sixty years that that could occur, but it's possible. Um, so we certainly want to have coverage and contingencies for that. Um, and, and just an example, again, last winter, a warm winter, we never actually had to inject um, from our Old Mill Lane site at all during the winter, um, because it just wasn't, we didn't hit, hit any of those temperatures. But you can see on the kind of uh, red or pink kind of um, line, that's, that's the additional capacity that Old Mill Lane provides us. Um, so you can see we're well above um, um, the peak um, demand that we might see not only now, but in fifteen years from now, which is um, what our study looked at. It looked at the use and the economic development and growth and so forth over the island over the next fifteen years. And we were really seeking a solution that provides that long-term enduring um, coverage, both for capacity and vulnerability overall. Uh, if you knew, move to the next slide. So again, this just highlights, you know, um, why we have portable LNG at Old Mill Lane. Um, we know that um, you know, there, there is some concerns, safety concerns. Um, people don't understand what LNG is and so forth. Uh, they don't understand it's not actually LNG itself is not flammable. LNG itself is not explosive. You know, these are things that, you know, there's the public and, and they wouldn't be aware of that. Um, but naturally, um, there are safety concerns about it. But at the end of the day, um, the operation at Old Mill Lane is providing a huge contingency factor for us for the entire island, uh, for all the, the um, sixty thousand residents across Aquinic Island and the fifteen thousand some gas and, or natural gas customers that we, we have. So, so we are, we are making sure that we have a safe and reliable means of energy being provided for the, for the winter season. Um, and, and we're also making sure that we're, uh, we're aware of, you know, costs and, and making sure we're trying to seek an affordable solution overall. Um, finally, we're also looking at ways that we want to um, you know, uh, adhere to our um, eighty by fifty net zero goals, our energy efficiency goals, our demand response goals and so forth. We're looking for ways we can carbonize um, our, our overall portfolio of solutions as we move forward as well. Um, and, and I'll just say this as a capstone, we do not want to have to operate out of Old Mill Lane. Um, we're really trying to get out of Old Mill Lane. And if we can find a path to do that, that's affordable, reliable and safe, you know, that's the path we're going to pursue with the public support, of course. So if you move to the next slide. This is just highlighting again, we, we've spent a lot of time lurking, looking at options. Um, I've, you know, no options were off the table, but I will say at this point, you know, we've narrowed down to four primary options. And again, keeping those primary catalysts are the, the, the primary objectives of uh, of looking at um, feasibility, implementation, cost, um, uh, decarbonized options and so forth. And of course, and first and foremost is safety. Um, so if you look at the next slide real quick, so we did this study. Um, again, our study is fully available for anybody to read on, on our webpage, um, which I'll cover at the end of these slides. So, so folks have a chance to review it if they haven't already. Um, but we did look at these four options um, that you can see highlighted here. And just a couple of notes that I'll highlight about these options. First of all, um, all of them uh, incorporate energy efficiency and demand response. We will always and continually pursue those opportunities to decarbonize our system and, and allow folks to save money um, through energy efficiency. We do have a program right now for demand response. And demand response means asking some of our largest customers who use gas on the coldest days of the year to not use them if they can do them. And we provide incentives to those customers. And that, that really is only, um, it's, it's, it's small in relation to the overall need, but it's, it's, you know, uh, a type of program that we want to continue to grow and pursue. All of our options are safe. Uh, you know, there are different factors that re- require safety parameters and so forth. And, and absolutely the safety protocols and procedures and the collaboration we have with the communities over those are always integrated into our, our portfolios for all the solutions. But as you can see here, there's, there's really four that we've come to um, provide is as far as what we believe are responsible um, solutions that, that really do reflect um, what we believe is the customer choice um, for the long-term and enduring energy solution of the island. And this is the, the choice for, for the majority. But again, we do not have um, a specific solution um, chosen at this point. And that's where we need your help in facilitating feedback on, on, on the right path forward. I'm going to go through, there's a slide on each of these, so I'm just going to go to the next slide real quick, if you could. The first, the first solution that we're presenting in our study is a completely non-infrastructure solution. Um, this would, you know, really uh, encapsulate the ideals of a decarbonized future, looking at electrification of heat overall, um, expanding gas demand response programs and ramping up energy efficiency overall. And, and so a couple of things, just what does this really mean, electrifying heat? Um, this means, you know, rather than using uh, a natural gas furnace, if you will, you would change out your home heating system and have an air source or ground source heat pump. That would be obviously um, powered by electricity. Uh, now in order to, to gain the um, the amount of savings of energy use you would need to equilibrate to it, to, to such an operation such as Old Mill Lane, um, you have some really extensive conversions that you'd have to do on the order of, uh, on, on all the residents across the island, on the order of converting nine thousand customers over to heat pumps. So converting nine thousand customers over to heat pumps is not something that you, is taken lightly, and it's certainly not something that's going to happen quickly. Um, but if this path were chosen, we would work with state, you know, the, the, our, our regulator, with um, the state policy uh, authorities, such as the Office of Energy Resources and the like, to create the right policies to put in place and ultimately work with our regulator to put in the right incentives to, to help um, you know, convert people over to electrified, electrified heat, if you will. But based on the magnitude of the heat, we're talking ten years before you get to the point where you, we can fully no longer count on something such as Old Mill Lane um, in operation. And it's also um, going to be very costly. Um, even with incentives, um, having people completely change out their heating system is, is not something that um, is going to come cheaply. But that's, that's our first presented option. Um, and one we certainly have a lot of support for with regards to our long-term, you know, energy efficiency and decarbonization goals overall. If you flip to the next slide. The next option is to um, seek a alternate LNG operation, if you will. And this could come in a variety of forms. Um, we could, um, and we are working with the Navy on a few potential sites with, on, on Navy property that we can locate a new LNG operation. Um, and these, these Navy properties, um, you know, they're, they're more, I'll call it secluded from the public. So they're, they're not as, you know, right in the residential area such as Old Mill Lane. Um, even though, you know, there, I'm sure will be some, some concerns from abutting residents to some of these Navy properties. But they are, they are more remote, um, and they provide us the, the ability or potential um, um, again, to operate um, on, on, onsite or on the Navy property that has um, you know, uh, the security measures and all the requirements that Navy requires. But it's not at the Navy base where we currently have our lease. Uh, as I indicated earlier, uh, property that we have, um, our current lease is, is targeted for future use by the Navy for other reasons. Another option uh, other than working on a Navy site, and by the way, at, at this Navy site, we could do either a, a, a temporary operation, which is very similar to Old Mill Lane, or we could put in a portable, or I mean, a permanent um, type of facility that would put permanent storage onsite. Um, the other option that we are considering is a barge uh, offshore. And this is a newer concept, an LNG barge. Um, it would be the first in the US to use for distribution purposes. They, there are a few cases where LNG barges are used for uh, refueling of ships of the, of the like, actually down in um, uh, one of our experts um, has actually worked in, uh, and is familiar with the project that there's currently an LNG barge operation down in Jacksonville, Florida. Um, and they're looking at these kind of operations, even out of New York and New Jersey as well. Um, but in this, when we talk about a barge, we're not talking like a big LNG tanker. Um, this is a smaller uh, platform which would come in during the season, the winter season. It would be on the ocean side of the island, it wouldn't be on the bay side. So we're not going under the bridges or anything like that. This would be on the ocean side. Um, and we would have to put in uh, you know, an underwater pipe out to a platform that this barge would basically park for the winter um, and inject natural gas as needed. So that's another option uh, on the table, um, and one we're considering. The other thing I'll mention with these new LNG uh, potential opportunities is it also gives us the ability to look at a hydrogen hub concept. And, and hydrogen um, is something that again is newer in the US. It's actually more popular and used in, in Europe. Um, but hydrogen can be blended in with natural gas um, and really supplement the overall need up to, up to really twenty percent of natural gas demand could be supplemented with uh, hydrogen blending. Hydrobin, hydrogen blending would then be, you know, a decarbonized um, uh, uh, less impact carbon footprint as it's basically, you're taking water, electrolyzing it, extracting the hydrogen and injecting it into the system. Um, so that, that's um, that's a, a, an interesting um, opportunity for us to build on potentially one of these new sites or locations on the Navy properties. The third option wouldn't necessarily be a national grid option. Um, this would be something we would advocate and work with our inner, our transmission or natural gas supplier. Um, and that's putting in a new transmission pipeline to the island. Um, basically a second pipe, if you will, uh, which would um, e- essentially replicate the current pipe and, and provide that expanded means of natural gas um, um, and it's, and it's uh, capacity overall. Uh, again, this would not be something, uh, this is not a national grid project per se, but um, uh, it, it's something we'd work closely with Enbridge, um, our transmission provider with. And then finally, um, the, the last option of what we could do, and I'll elaborate a little bit more on this if you go to the next slide. You know, we could just continue to operate at Old Mill Lane. Um, and again, this is not something that we prefer, um, to be honest with you, but it is an option that we have to leave on the table because uh, essentially it is a lease cost option, which I'll talk about here. Um, if we get to the next slide, I'm not sure. Uh, there we go. Um, um, but, and, and again, we would continue to look at other alternatives. And, and really this is just buying time, um, as other opportunities might um, present themselves. But it is, it is an option we have to consider. It is a responsible option because it is the most affordable option essentially, as it doesn't require any new infrastructure. It doesn't require any new programs. It doesn't require anybody to be converting their heat um, source and so forth. So that, that really is the last option. Although again, um, a- as much as we have it as a solution, it, we are trying to find a means to, to not have to operate out of Old Mill Lane. So if you go to the next slide. I just want to kind of highlight, you know, all the kind of criteria. And, and for anybody who was, who's looked at our study or who attended our, our, um, our open house, you know, we did, we did look at a lot of criteria with all of these operating, operate uh, options for solution. Cost, reliability, community impact, environmental impact, you know, the feasibility of installing it. We looked at how long we'd have to continue to operate at Old Mill Lane. And so one of the, one of the clear clarifications I'll make today is um, we are intending and will be pursuing, you know, additional winters at Old Mill Lane. No matter what solution we pursue, um, we, we, they're, they're going to take time to build and implement. So, so there, there, there is um, pretty much uh, uh, with all certainty, um, a need to continue to operate at Old Mill Lane, at least for uh, another two or three winters. Um, and, and that's something, you know, that, that, again, that's just because of the, the timeline to uh, to build one of these more, uh, o- other solutions overall. And I say at least two or three winters, again, if we pursue the non-infrastructure option, we're going to take ten to twelve years before we have enough people converted over to electric heat that we can discontinue operation. You know, that's, that's going to be the, the, you know, the scenario overall um, that we will be facing to ensure that we have, again, um, an ability to safely and reliably serve all the customers across Aquinic Island. You know, as everybody knows, natural gas and heat overall, it's a, it's a vital service for the community. Um, there have, there have been um, some folks who suggested um, moratoriums, right? Discontinue the use, don't allow any new construction of natural gas. And that's certainly something the communities can pursue. It's not one we believe is the most responsible for the overall economy of Aquinic Island. Um, but if that's something that local communities choose to pursue, so be it. But even with a moratorium, we still are in a situation where the vulnerability and the existing capacity is not adequate just on the transmission um, supply alone. So it doesn't solve the Old Mill Lane problem, I guess, I guess you might say. Um, if, if certain communities were to um, resurrect or, or move forward a uh, moratorium on new construction, for example, on, on, on natural gas. But we know that's possibility, um, and that could come into play. Let me just go to the next slide real quick. Uh, this slide um, we extracted from the study. This is, this is for those of you who attended our open house, we did not show this slide because it gets a little detail and might be a little hard to understand. But um, I wanted to show it to the town council just so you can give a little more insight on kind of the, the on kind of the pros and cons and the weighting factors and so forth. And so what you have here is just a list of Harvey balls. The Harvey balls, the greater they're shaded or the more fuller the circle, the more favorable they are. And I will say that the favorability is relative to each solution. So, for example, the favorability of cost, for example, the cheapest, most favorable option is this discontinue to operate Old Mill Lane as we continue to escalate demand-side management programs, such as energy efficiency and demand response. That is the lowest cost option. That's why three-quarter circle. But Old Mill Lane, as you get into community, has, you know, only a quarter circle filled in. It's the least favorable option from maybe a community perspective overall. So that's how you you read these weightings and these factors overall. I am going to have a slide just on cost alone, so I'll get to that in a second. But I do want to make a couple of notes here. The reliability factor, the weighting there, we believe all of these solutions presented are reliable, but but for comparison purposes, we we put a reliability factor in there because clearly, you know, a pipeline where it's underground, it's not subject to weather and so forth, is going to have, in comparative purposes, a higher reliability weighting than, say, something portable that requires trucking, right? Where you where you are trucking across roadways and the like. So that's why we have a reliability weighting overall. The community impacts, you know, I'll be honest with you, we do have a feedback form on our website and we encourage anybody and everybody to put their put their vote in, if you will, put their feedback on the form because we're collecting that. We're going to synthesize that. We're going to be showing that and sharing that with our regulator once we present a path forward so that we can demonstrate the voice of the community. But right now, it's all over the board. We have folks who are very pro, put the pipeline in. We have folks just, I just want the cheapest option. And then you have, you know, folks who are really concerned about the environment and want to pursue the non-infrastructure option. And then, of course, you have the residents around Old Mill Lane who say, just do anything but not Old Mill Lane operation, right? So we understand all that. We get that there are a lot of concerns and that that no solution is going to be easy for anyone necessarily, that each one has its challenges overall. But at the end of the day, we're here to make sure that we provide energy for the island. We know it's vital. We want to make sure we provide it reliably reliably and safely. And we also want to consider, again, affordability overall. And we're looking to you, the community, to give us feedback of what you want or what you think is going to be the best path forward for the energy solution of the island. Like I said, if you go to the next slide, I did have one slide here on cost because that typically is one of the most vocal elements that folks share with, you know, what's going to cost me at the end of the day, what kind of bill impacts is it going to have? You know, these solutions are going to hit our customers, the ratepayers, if you will. So it is going to have an impact. It is going to be spread. If we pursue certain options, it would be spread to all Rhode Island customers. That, you know, we're under one regulatory authority for all of Rhode Island. So these these costs will, you know, be injected into the overall rate base within the state. But if you look at, I just want to highlight, you look at, you know, kind of just the picture of the cost, the most expensive option is the non-infrastructure option. The least expensive is continuing operation at Old Mill Lane. So as you narrow in here, you look at, well, what's the middle ground? What would be the balance? Well, you see the Navy sites are right in the middle if we were to look at some sort of operation there, but they're still expensive. I should I should have mentioned, you know, looking at a new site on Navy property will require us to to extend our our gas pipeline within, you know, so that we can reach our our high-pressure distribution system. So you're putting, you know, miles, two to four miles of new gas pipeline. That's why this stuff is going to take time to build. And we have to, you know, put that those assets into the ground before they can be operationed in addition to just doing the siting work alone on a potential Navy property. Actually, the LNG barge falls kind of on the lower end of cost overall when you look at the net present value for operating, which is of interest. But I know there's a lot of folks have concerns about, you know, an LNG barge offshore through the winter, through the winter months. Okay, so I think I have one last slide because I'm sure there'll be many questions I want to get to. So this is really, to cap off, as I highlighted, we have all of this information in detail via our study on our website, engrid.com/Equinix. If you go to that site, you can see the full report, the full study. There is a link to provide your feedback. We want the community's feedback. Please provide it. We also, we have on the site currently a full recording of our open house where we talk a lot more detail about the options. We have a lot of the subject matter experts actually providing that detail. And actually, hopefully tomorrow, we'll post all of the questions that were asked during the open house. It took us a little time because we wanted to answer every single question and with thorough detail. So all of those questions will be posted for everybody to review. And like I said, we should have that up either tomorrow or Wednesday on our website for for all the questions that were asked during the open house. All right, I know that was a lot. I appreciate the opportunity to share all that. I'm sure there's a host of questions, so I'll reserve that for what you may have for me.
Okay, before we get started, I just want to ask a couple of quick questions. And Brian, thank you. That was a lot of information. I know you had to summarize. I did listen in on the last go-around for the open house. I did listen in on that, so I know you had to consolidate. But again, a lot of information. A couple of things that I just want to kind of clarify. For comments and feedback, you mentioned that National Grid is looking to make a recommendation by the end of the year. So what are you looking at for a cutoff for comments from residents, from the communities?
So we're hoping to have most of the comments in by early December. Now, I should highlight, you know, as we start to see more and more feedback come in, we are looking to make a recommendation. We were hoping to make a recommendation by the end of the calendar year. I will say that we may we may need more time and we may have a recommendation that has actually a hybrid of options overall. When it comes, excuse me, a second. Sorry about that. And so as we continue to get feedback from the community and formulate the recommendation, and again, when I say a hybrid, we may, maybe we can, maybe we'll use part of the non-infrastructure scenario, but still need some temporary LNG and that sort of thing, you know. We're going to we're going to keep all options on the table. So there have been, you know, some folks have said, what can you maybe do not, you know, for new installations, can you put, you know, heat electrification on for new installations, but solve your current capacity and vulnerability with an LNG type of operation? That's possible. So but bottom line is, yeah, we're looking for feedback by the beginning of December, ideally.
Okay, and then National Grid is making a recommendation on either either one of these four options or a hybrid of these options. Who is that recommendation going to? Is that to the facility's siting board? Or who's that recommendation to?
No, that, oh, thank you. Good question. That would be to the Division of Public Utilities and Carries and ultimately the PUC, our regulator. So our regulator oversees all of our, both infrastructure and in forms, non-infrastructure work and in general. So the approvals to move forward with these types of options has to go through our regulator overall. So that's who the recommendation is to. And that who, again, who has oversight, even our operations at Old Mill Lane, the inspections they conduct, they oversee all of those operations and they have that jurisdiction, have an authority.
Thank you. Before I open it up, do any councilors have any questions?
Yep.
Okay.
I guess it's more, you want our opinion, so comments and opinions, not so much a question. But, you know, I know you guys are weighing all the options and all the pros and cons and costs of...
It's sad that you cut off. Like, we're not hearing you. You froze.
She froze.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can I ask you to repeat?
All right, over. I know there's a table, I have pros and cons.
Oh, we're losing you again.
Apparently, we need a better internet supplier, too.
Yeah, we definitely need a better internet. All right, I'm going to turn off my video and see if you can hear me with my video off. Can you hear me with my video off?
Yeah. That's better.
Okay, I will try that. So anyway, there's a lot of pros and cons and a lot of different options to weigh. And I know that you're going to be going through, your engineer is going through the process. I think as an elected official, we would see a hybrid approach, personally. I think incentives to get people to convert and and a little bit of the the non-infrastructure approach woven into whatever solution you end up narrowing in on would be something I would like, I would like to be in the best interest of our our community. I would be open to entertaining the idea of a moratorium in conjunction with incentives, as in like a one-for-one trade-off for new hookups become available when you get people off. I think those are all options that probably should be on the table and and considered. And then wherever you end up in that that chart, that last chart bar graph that you showed, you know, in the middle options there, I would just like to say that Old Mill Lane is not a long-term facility and I would I would not be supportive of having that be your long-term solution. So as we approve it on a, you know, yearly or two years at a time, we would appreciate you coming back and updating the status of your long-term solutions because, you know, it might be responsible to keep it on the table for now and a good temporary solution, but I certainly do not want to see that being our our long-term answer to this problem. And since there is a capacity issue, I don't know, incentives in conjunction with the moratorium, in conjunction with a long-term solution, whether it's the pipeline or the LNG barge, it would be nice to have a combination of all of those. So, and thank you for the update.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we've received many similar type of comments. And of course, the challenge is with a hybrid approach, you still are investing, you know, significant money and so the affordability question comes into play. So if you look at it, so all of these, all of these options alone can provide adequate heating for, you know, the 15 years plus of the study. It gives us so much drive. So we put an LNG, you don't, I hate to say it, you don't need the electrification, even though we want to do that for our decarbonization goals, absolutely right. But with an LNG barge or another LNG site on Navy property, you just, you you open up the the capacity such that those other programs aren't necessary, but maybe we still want to pursue them because it's, you know, good for other reasons, right? But but whenever you do that, you're adding more and more cost into the equation. So that's the that's the only challenge with the hybrid approach is you end up spending a lot more money when you don't necessarily have to just for for heating purposes alone. But but I get I get your point and it makes a lot of sense because we've heard similar feedback.
Mr. President, I just, I think the audience has tremendous questions, so I will only ask one. And that is, Brian, I know you're saying that, right, the purpose of this is to try to pick one of the four options or get feedback about that. But what I'm hearing as a town council person is that my constituents are actually being harmed. And you only talked about that for a little bit, about sights, sounds, smells. If they are being harmed, I don't, I think they need to be compensated by EnGrid because they shouldn't be the way that the rest of the folks in Rhode Island are able to get cheaper gas. So how, what is your mechanism for allowing them to ask for compensation?
So thank you for the question. I will say, I'm not sure the, if I understand the the harm. We certainly, we believe what the operation is safe and we're not we're not imposing any harm to community. Now, if you're talking about light being harmful or the noise being harmful, I can understand that the, I'll call it disappointment in that. I mean, we have we have infrastructure.
Property value devaluation.
Yeah, so we have, our assets run throughout the state. And if we compensated everybody for every transmission tower we put in, every substation, every, even LNG operations, the rates for our customers would be ridiculously expensive. So that that is not something we we do. We don't compensate for operations due to the alleged devaluing of property, if you will, because of our infrastructure. But I am concerned about, you know, folks thinking they're in harm or they're at harm. And I guess, you know, that sounds like they're, they feel there's some sort of imminent danger. And I get that any any fuel, any operation has inherent risks, if you will. And that's why we work very closely with both our regulator and the local community and with, you know, the fire departments and so forth and develop the right safety protocols and procedures. LNG is not, I mean, so now I can, I'll voice my opinion because, I mean, as far as the danger and the risks, the likelihood of any sort of scenario is obviously extremely rare. We provided these detailed stats and so forth with, to the fire department officials. So the, you know, one in 10 million chance that we had some sort of incident. And the incident would be in the form of potentially, you know, a leak, if you will, and fumes escaping, you know, and there could be, you know, the fire department would be part of the the process to recover from that. So you're talking folks would have to potentially evacuate, you know, the neighbors would have to evacuate for a period of time while the fumes or the the leak disseminates. You know, that's the kind of risks that we're we're talking about here. LNG is in itself is non-toxic. It's lighter than air once it becomes vaporized. So if there were ever a leak of this liquid compacted fuel, it's going to immediately evaporate. But that fume, of course, once it gets a certain concentration of oxygen, it is, you know, flammable. So that's what you got to be careful of. So those are the precautions and the safety protocols and all the different measures that we have, like you would have with other facilities or establishments that have fuels of some sort. You know, your propane tank and your gas grill has, if not more risk, that you have to weigh into the equation overall. But that's why we have such strict and 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 strong safety protocols and procedures and operations and qualifications and training and the drills that we do and so forth. So I get that there is safety concern. I understand. We all understand that, including ourselves, we don't want to have to operate at Old Mill Lane. But as far as devaluing property and the like, that's not something National Grid entertains. We just not, again, we have, we have these types of operations in like infrastructure throughout the state. We're there to provide an essential service and unfortunately, there's going to be, you know, there are some neighbors that are closer to to this specific temporary operation than others.
Interesting answer. Thank you, thank you. I'll let the other folks ask questions.
I'm not seeing any from the attendees, but there are some questions. And Brian, are you able to see the questions?
Let me see, I think I might.
You've probably addressed two of them, but I I don't know. Are you able to see them?
I am. So let me just, I just want to read it here real quick. Okay, so one of the questions is around the the conversion of customers. The 9,000 customers to eliminate would be eliminating the both current and projected deficit. So we are we are pursuing a permanent, long-term enduring solution. We're not just trying to solve today's challenge, but the challenge for the next 15 years. So that 9,000 customers, which is approximately 65% of our gas customers across the island, we would be looking to convert for load predicted up to 2035, if you will. So it's not just today. I think that was one of the questions.
Okay, I think I, I think it was as well.
Yeah. Um, and what about, so there was a question on what about a moratorium on new connections and then electrify some current customers? Yeah, that, that certainly, that's been, um, suggested previous. That would be, um, again, more of a hybrid approach, um, which is certainly possible. But, uh, again, that comes with the, um, additional challenges in the form of cost. Because we'd still be implementing, um, some form of, um, you know, the moratorium, again, does not cover the, the challenges that exist today and why we have Old Mill Lane with regard to vulnerability and capacity. That would just impact future growth. Okay, let me make sure. Your report also know that when you account for benefits, that the non-infrastructure looks much better than almost all their options, particularly if you don't. So there's somebody, I guess I think they're making a comment that the non-infrastructure solution looks, um, looks better than all options. Like, you know, again, we don't have necessarily, we, if, if it was an easy answer, we would have, uh, already approached the, uh, regulator with the solution going forward. But, um, all options have, have their pros and cons. I will say that, yeah, that, that there's mention of Massachusetts ratepayers picking up half the pipeline cost. If, if we were to pursue, uh, a new transmission pipeline, um, which would be, again, owned and operated by Enbridge, uh, there, there is a potential benefit for Massachusetts because the pipeline would, would, could potentially provide additional benefits to, um, gas capacity constraints on K-Cod, for example. So there's a, there's an opportunity to do some cost sharing with that option. That's already embedded in our overall study, which those of who read it will, will, will find that. There's a question about, uh, willing to continuously monitor and record the noise level, allow town official loggers to review the log. Um, that's certainly something we can entertain as far as recording noise levels. Um, and then we agree, the noise level, we want to mitigate overall. Um, and we're looking at every opportunity to do that. We're not sure what the, what kind of monitoring and what sort of devices. We'd have to look into what that entails, but we can certainly, um, um, entertain looking further into that as far as recording and monitoring noise levels. And then, uh, and somebody mentions the Rhode Island test. So for those who don't know, um, the Rhode Island test in simple terms is, uh, when you start to, um, blend in societal benefits, if you will, to cost, um, that, that changes the equation or the, the answer, if you will, for overall costs. Our costs that we present in the study are net present value costs just alone for that solution, if you will. But some of the solutions are, are, are simply, you know, there are, you know, if you, if we go with a non-infrastructure, um, solution, for example, um, what is the long-term societal benefits? And what are the increased jobs, right, for all the, the, the amount of, um, um, personnel that would be hired to change equipment, right, and, and so forth? That, that has a societal benefit. What are the long-term health benefits, right, of a more decarbonized, um, setting? So, um, there are, there are costs, I'll say, or savings, or however you want to categorize it, that are not necessarily related to just like the infrastructure or the physical cost that we would have to endure that we, because they're, um, I guess, subjective sometimes in nature and, and not yet fully vetted as far as how they would look, um, we did not build those, not those society costs into our, into our analysis. But that is, that is something we do reference in the, uh, study. And certainly something that if that option's pursued, would get more visibility and have, have obviously more analysis done on. How frequent on the blowdowns at Old Mill Lane? So the blowdowns, again, we, we do have to periodically vent the tanks to, that, that they can over time create vapor, um, um, pockets in the top of the tanks. Um, so it, it all depends on the temperatures, um, outside and so forth. And so for regular maintenance purposes, they do conduct planned, um, venting, vapor venting to get, to, 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 to remove the vapors from the tanks. Um, it depends, so I can't say for sure. Um, we can certainly follow up with this specific example, but, um, we are, again, targeting to do those only during business hours during the day. Uh, you could, they could be done once a day, um, every other day type of scenario. It does, it does depend on, um, the conditions. We also, um, um, we're looking at means to, again, recapture that, that venting, um, into the system as I highlighted earlier. And that, that way you wouldn't have any, any venting whatsoever happening from, from the, the tanks. That would mitigate all that noise. But that is the loudest, um, e- element of our operations at Old Mill Lane is the venting. It's a, it's a large hissing noise as the air vents out of the tanks. Uh, okay, um, would you please move, okay, um, yeah, we can, we can move the porta potty. I, I, it seems like there's a visibility issue with the, uh, it doesn't matter. We, we do have a, um, trailer that we put on site for, um, some of our operational personnel. As again, we have that site manned 24/7, both the security and operation personnel. Um, and it looks like there's a concern about, um, where the Porta John was located last year, so we can look at relocating that. Jock, you'll take that for note. So there's a question, why is National Grid using CNG in New York and LNG in Rhode Island? And the, and the simple answer is LNG has a much, much, um, more effective, um, uh, uh, energy dynamic, if you will. There's more, there's more energy within an LNG. It's, you know, you liquefy it versus compressed. Um, so the, the amount versus having multiple CNG sites, which our, our downstate, um, element down in Long Island has. We have numerous CNG sites across Long Island. We're, we're looking to minimize the impact of our temporary, uh, uh, operations on Old Mill Lane. Again, we don't even want to have to be there if we don't have to. So we have one site, one LNG site provides us that adequate capacity. And, um, um, you know, uh, uh, what a contingency from vulnerability, sorry. That's why we're mainly using LNG. You just get more, you get more energy from that source than CNG. What is getting vented from the tanks? Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Uh, there, there's a last question on what is getting vented from the tanks during blowdowns? Is there environmental climate? There is, there, it, it is largely air, but naturally with any venting, um, from this, there are some, um, methane particulates. So you do have some elements of, of, uh, gas particulates that is included in the venting. Um, nothing more than you would get from an exhaust vehicle of your vehicle or of that nature. It, it's, yeah, it's concentrated, it happens quickly. Um, but yeah, it's a combination of air and methane.
Um, we do have a, a question from one of the panelists, uh, Mr. Crosby.
Um, I don't have a question as much as an observation. First of all, I, can you hear me? I would, I would like to say, first of all, that this is really a sterling example of the planning process presenting, um, a, a, a broad sensitivity analysis and, and getting public im- improve, uh, impact is, you know, public opinion is, is crucial to making something like this as broad as, as this is of a... Oh, I, I, I like to say, a problem requires a solution and a predicament requires it to be addressed. We don't, we're not going to solve this problem, but we certainly have to address it. And we have to address it in a, in a large-scale way as a community. I think a moratorium, my experience with moratoriums has been that moratoriums have to have a, a sunset date. You can't just place a moratorium and then, uh, walk away from the problem. You have to continue to work on the problem and the moratorium needs to go away at certain point. And third, thirdly, I'd like to talk about the property value argument for a moment. I think that, um, there's a lot of misconception about how property values are, are affected by this sort of thing. Property values, when a, when a assessor goes out to look at property values, he doesn't walk around and say, oh, this guy has got, uh, a junk farm next to his property and therefore his property is devalued. The property, it's, it has, it, where property values come in, into places when there is a transaction that takes place. And that, um, uh, it depends upon what someone is willing to accept as a value of their property when they're trying to sell it. So I, I, I think that it, if, if, if you want to try and say that, uh, having a LNG, a temporary LNG facility like this next to my property is going to devalue it, I don't, I think that over time you have to understand that there may be six or eight or 10 or a hun- or, you know, a dozen, uh, properties in the neighborhood that eventually gets sold for less. But that, it, it, it just doesn't, we see this all the time in zoning, where we get complaints about people talking about their property being devalued by this guy next door. Um, uh, you know, having a tree overhanging the property or, you know, he's got a, he's got a dozen boat trailers in his front yard. But it just doesn't work that way. And so I, I, I think that, I think that a predicament like this requires us as a community to kind of step up, um, as a whole to try and, and understand the problem rather than us, um, trying to, to, to appreciate the problem individually. Thank you, that's my two cents.
I, I, I appreciate your comments and I would like to thank you for highlighting the, the approach that we're taking. You know, this is the first time we're taking this sort of community voiced approach, um, for, for a challenge, um, for, for, for all of our operation history in, in National Grid in, in Rhode Island. Um, and we want to be very transparent about the challenge that we have. We want to make sure people understand that we do and we are in a situation where we, um, we want to protect, um, um, folks' vulnerability to, to, you know, a heating issue. And, and obviously the outage that happened a year and a half ago, uh, very unfortunate. Um, and it took us, you know, we were able to mobilize the, the Old Mill Lane site after the event. But, um, as a contingency for that scenario, you know, we don't, we never want that to happen again. Um, but it's a really complicated, uh, a solution path forward. And, and frankly, again, we, all, everything's on the table. Um, it doesn't hurt us National Grid at all, one option over the other. It's just what is the community willing to endure, if you will, um, regarding? And what is their favorite approach? And, and we want to support that and bring that to our regulator, um, at the end of the day. And that, and it's really the first time that we're using this kind of transparent, hey, hey, folks, um, we want to make sure we provide reliable, safe energy and we're here to do that for you. Here's the cards on the table, um, take your pick and we'll support it. And, and, uh, we're hoping that we, we get, we get, um, everybody in, because the, 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 um, the opinions are across the board, but we're, we're hoping we're able to come to some sort of consensus of the optimal, uh, approach forward. Thank you for those comments.
Did you just get a question? Our president? Yeah?
I do. Um, it seems to me that the only real viable long-term solution for this is a new pipeline to the island. Uh, whether, and it most likely should be either at the northern end of the eastern side to create a loop system so that we don't have an outage from one side or the other. Putting on temporary sites, whether it be at the Navy, certainly not at Old Mill anymore, are, are not long-term viable. If we don't have a loop system providing two directions of gas, eventually we're going to have the same situation. Um, building a, putting in a moratorium, to me, what might defeat the purpose of the long-term goal of mitigating, mitigating any issues for climate change. Because people may just turn around and say, well, the price of oil today is a lot less expensive than building, putting in heat pumps. So they may go with oil, which is not as clean as the natural gas. So.
Right.
Working on a, on a two-site solution is the best option where we are working on trying to get people off of fossil fuels, but we may end up hurting ourselves in the long run for a short-term solution. Um, I would like to see us, obviously, get rid of the Old Mill Lane as quickly as possible. But to me, it seems like the easiest thing and the most beneficial for the long-term use is to loop the system together, coming across the north side, you know, with the pipeline that feeds the natural gas, uh, energy plant. And creating a loop throughout the island, because when we have the dead ends, that's why we end up with half an island shut down.
Thank you, thank you for that feedback. But there's a question about approval from the state in 2018. So we got the, the approval from the state. Uh, that, I think that was being referred to zoning approval for operation. We, we had, um, maintenance operations during the summer 2018. And the, the approval from the state comes every year, uh, and via our, our regulator. Um, we provide them notice and then they, they begin their planning and inspection process, if you will. Um, so just wanted to clarify, there was, there was approval from the state in 2018. I think they're referring to town zoning approval. As we got a zoning certificate in 2018 from you. Uh, there's a question on what percentage of natural gas at Old Mill Lane supports Portsmouth versus the other townships? Um, Jock, do you have the breakdown by each community? I mean, Old Mill Lane supports the entire island. Um, I, it, so the percentage of, of customers is based on the number of customers in each community. Naturally Newport is the largest, uh, I can tell you that, right? And that's not too hard to figure out. It's got the most businesses and the like, um, as with the Navy base and so forth. So, uh, and part of it's on Middletown, I know. But, uh, I'd have to get back to you on the exact breakdown of percentage, unless, Jock, you happen to have that?
Not handy, Brian, but, but the numbers increase as you go towards Newport.
Right, as you can tell with the, uh, dynamics of the island makeup.
Um, Mr. President, there's a couple of questions that a constituent asked me to ask. May I, may I ask those for this person? Okay, um, first, which regulatory entity determined that operating an LNG from trucks for the entire heating season is temporary?
Which regulator, so our, again, our, the Division of Public Utilities and Carriers.
Okay, and the second.
That's our, that's, and then, and then a branch of that, again, just to highlight my topic about EFSB earlier. The Energy Facility Siting Board, because they had not, um, have not yet ruled on how to oversee temporary facilities, just gave a waiver, so, so there could be further assessment done on, on their additional oversight. So that would be like a second of oversight, because they're kind of a branch of the, of the, um, actually the, the chair of the, uh, Energy Facility Siting Board is the chair of the PUC, our regulator. Um, so, um, that's how, but you pull in the, um, Office of Energy Resources and I think the, um, Office of Energy Management is part of the Energy Facility Siting Board as well. Again, the EFSB is for the siting construction or altercation of permanent major facilities is what, or major facilities is what it says in its charter, if you will. So, so the, um, the declaratory order that we have with the EFSB is to determine, do they have additional jurisdiction over temporary sites, um, or not?
Okay, and the second question this person wants to ask is, could National Grid provide a list of typical LNG safety requirements compared to what exists at the Old Mill temporary site today? Examples such as spill containment area, vapor suppression system, shaker fence for the site security, et cetera?
Um, so some of that, um, um, we, some of that information is what we call critical energy facilities, which is not disclosed to the public for security purposes, so the exact specifics. But certainly, um, we share all of that information to the local officials, the town officials. Um, so I can't tell you, you know, necessarily our security, um, all of their security measures that we might have on site, um, monitoring, personnel. I've had people ask me like, what type of firearms and security personnel carry? You know, we, we don't share that information publicly, again, because it's a critical energy, um, infrastructure facility. We, we fall under that national protection, if you will, from, from, um, from public disclosure. Obviously, for obviously purposes that somebody might use that information for nefarious purposes. Uh, but, but certainly spill containment and the like, uh, we do have barriers. We have berms around the tanks that we set up and, and so forth that, um, certainly, um, the fire department and the local town officials have seen and well see as they tour the sites. Um, so I, I think there, there probably are some. Um so I I think there there probably are some things that we can provide um to the public. So let me take that as a takeaway to see what additional details on all of our um safety protocols uh that we put in place on the site. It's an understandable question. It's just some of it, um again, we can't share publicly for for security purposes.
I don't believe that they are seeking those kinds of security issue um related information, but thank you.
I mean, if people might ask, well, what's the position of the tanks? And you know, what's on the other side of the fence? And we do have vehicle protection barriers, jersey barriers put in place, but we're not going to tell people where they are. We're not going to tell people how the tanks are set up, because somebody may be trying to target that or something, right? Or do some, again, nefarious activities. So we, again, we we can share some information, I'm sure. It's just I'll have to go back to the uh LNG and our security team of what we can publicly disclose, if you will. But but any of that for any town council members, any any town officials, um the first responders. Uh we offer site tours, your wealth will will set those up. Those are always open invitations um for any, again, public officials that have a need to know, if you will.
Right, no, I went on that tour. Thank you very much. Um and um I guess one other question I have is so the LNG tanks would be carrying um their cargo across on East Main Road, is that correct?
Uh Jac, do you have the exact path, uh route, which, by the way, the routes that we would carry and when we would carry them? All of that is shared with the local police and fire departments. Um so they have the exact specific routes, as all of those routes are filed with the DOT. Actually, they have to have a hazmat safety permit um before they can transmit any LNG uh on any roads in the state. So there's a DOT uh permit um that's required. But yeah, the exact route that's used, um I'm, I apologize, I don't have all the names of the streets on the top of my head. Jac, you may have it.
I don't have it with me, Brian. The LNG team has it and they will review with fire officials.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm just nervous driving my Honda Civic on East Main Road, so it's just a scary road. Whatever the safety requirements, I thank you.
Um it it looks like there's two two last questions. Um are you able to see them, Brian?
Uh yes, well, you do a site tour for neighbors who have questions about the site. You know, that that's a really good question. Um let me see if we can look at that. Again, we we, the site um is um shielded, um again, for uh security purposes about certain parameters on the site. So I I have to check, I have to run that by our security team. We we do open it, obviously, for public officials. Um legislators have visited the site to the our, obviously, our regulator, they inspect the site, um both announced and unannounced. Um but let me see if we're able to provide site tours for neighbors. We'll have to get back to that and if, um and I know that, I know the specific individual asking. Um so we'll get back to that that um family. And we can share that, I'll share that with um um Rich as well.
And one last question about residents having access to natural, natural gas. Why don't residents in Portsmouth have access to residential natural gas?
Okay, so so certainly there are many um residents that do. Um for folks that don't, um there there's maybe not an understanding that um in order to get natural gas on your street, there has to be a main installation on the street. And I think most of you know, um that main installation has to be permitted, approved, or installed. And it also has to be paid for. And in many cases, um the the for a main installation and the service therein, if you're not, if you're not on a gas main already, that cost as 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 regulated is is borne by the cost causer or the the party asking for the service. So we can absolutely install um a gas service to all residents. It's just whether or not it would be affordable for them. If they're the only resident asking, for example, and they have got to put in two miles of main, you're talking, you know, a million dollars to put that in and and that's something that's, again, goes with the cost causer. So the only other exception is, um if there's some sort of other restriction that we have. Um I don't, if if there's a a zoning or a environmental restriction for us to physically install the pipe um or get the pipe, if you will, um to be accessible. But usually it's mostly, um folks understand that it's just not, you can't, not, natural gas is not existent in, on every street. And and for us to put the main, a new main into that street, um you know, somebody's got to pay for it.
Okay, um so I think that kind of some of the questions, I just want to summarize again. Thank you, Brian, for the presentation. Jac, thank you for being available. Uh it's important that for any further questions, comments, to get those submitted to National Grid uh at no later than December 1st or middle of November, what was it?
Uh yeah, by December 1st. We we would appreciate your feedback on a solution, because we're really trying to be timely and trying to formulate an approach. Um if we don't, if we find inconclusive, you know, um uh you know, a path forward, we we likely will extend the open comment period, but yeah, for the next month, we're really looking for your feedback.
And that, and uh Town Administrator just pointed out that link is available on our uh front page of the town website. I I see that there are um additional questions coming in. Um those questions can be be forwarded to you, Brian. You you see them?
Yeah, and absolutely, especially the property, if 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 one of the trucks or truck drives on somebody's property, uh we would absolutely fix um any, if there were any damages um due to the truck. So yeah, we will absolutely take that um um back to our team. If somebody drove over somebody's lawn or something, I I guess is that maybe what it it might be pertaining to.
And then the one final question here is, uh who who do we contact at the PUC about the plan?
Um, uh I'm trying to think who the best, I mean, there's several contacts. I guess if you go to the the Division of Public Utilities and Carriers, their website, they would have a public, I'm sure they have a public um portal, but I can find out exactly. There's, there's a whole, obviously, the whole department of personnel that oversee our operations and and specifically are are aware of this. The um the lead administrator of of the division is Linda George, and she she heads the the division. Not to say that she's she'd be the person you'd contact, but uh I defer you to the Division of Public Utilities and Carriers website for the right contact information. They they are very familiar with this topic. They have been fully briefed on it. Um and uh, you know, it's not going to be a surprise to to hear about it.
Hey, well, again, thank you. Um and again, to for everybody, uh there is a link on our website. Please get your questions or comments uh in uh before December 1st.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Brian and Jac.
Thank you.
We are going to move on now. Um full business number two. It's our monthly finance report. Questions, comments?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Radyar?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, under whole business, we have a request to schedule and advertise for a public hearing for amendments to the zoning ordinance to include solar energy systems regulation. Um just to clarify that uh this is um a public hearing that was previously held, the ordinance was previously held. Um there was a defect in our prior notice. So we will be re-going through the process again and rescheduling, re-advertising for a public hearing. So anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance uh would be able to do so at the next public hearing. November 23rd would be the uh date of the public hearing.
Motion to schedule a public here November 23rd.
Segmented.
If I may, Mr. President.
Was that Ms. Kat?
I just wanted to comment, um you you had noted that there was, it was pointed out to us a defect in the notice of the meeting. Uh my understanding is that that there might have been, there is somebody who has pointed out that they believe that there is a no, a defect in the notice. I'm not sure that there was actually a defect in the notice, but out of an abundance of caution, we are rescheduling the hearing. That's all.
Okay, so we have a, thank you, Ms. Kat. We have a a motion and a second.
We have a, we have a citizen who would like to comment.
All right, sorry about that.
No problem, just make sure you didn't miss it.
Cross.
Mr. President, David Cross and 118 Sweet Farm Road. Um can you hear me?
Got you, yep.
Yeah, okay. Um first of all, uh just from the citizen, from my perspective, I want to thank you guys for leading us through this very strange year and uh um I know how difficult it is for you to change all your processes. Um I want to keep to the agenda item, but I'm a little bit confused. If we're reposting the public meeting, could you please address the vote that was taken immediately following the public meeting on May 11th?
Hi.
Excuse me, Mr. Mr. President. Mr. Crossen has sent a correspondence uh uh indicating an intent to file legal action against the town. I don't think it's appropriate to have a debate on on those type of issues. The matter on the agenda is a request to advertise and the motion's been made. I I don't think it's uh it it proper to engage in a dialogue with Mr. Crossen on the issues pertinent to his legal claim.
Mr. President, I don't want to question what uh the solicitor is telling you. Uh he's your legal counsel. Um but wouldn't it make an abundance of sense to not delay further than November 23rd? Uh by, actually, you you made a statement earlier that you you did believe the town heard. Uh Mr. Katzman um does not believe that fully. Um but um I find it hard to believe under uh Title 45, Chapter 24, Section 53, where it says no zoning ordinance shall be adopted, repealed, or amended until after a public hearing. I'm just a little bit confused and I'm I'm just, I guess I'm questioning, I'm not, you know, I wrote a letter to the solicitor believing that there was a notice I think you're admitting that there's a notice issue. Uh why can't we just be upfront about this and and reverse the vote and have a public hearing and move forward with the respect of its citizens?
I I recommend, it was not an appropriate discussion. Uh Mr. Crossen raised an issue on what he claimed was a problem with the notice. The council was addressing it in the most expeditious way possible and we're moving forward with that. And other than any further discussion relates to Mr. Crossen's uh potential legal claim, and and I recommend that that we don't engage in any further discussion on this.
I'll stand down.
Yeah, and and uh, Mr. Cross, I I understand your question. Unfortunately, um I am not going to give you an answer. Um we are only here tonight to discuss the scheduling and advertising for for the public hearing.
I respect that, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um we have a motion in a second for a public hearing on November 23rd. Uh all those in favor?
Ms. Yakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Radyar?
Aye, motion seven to zero. Okay, let's move on to new business. Um first item is request approval of proclamation announcing Portsmouth Prevention Coalition's Red Ribbon Week October 23rd to the 31st, 2020. If you give me one moment, I will read proclamation. Okay, town, town of Portsmouth proclamation recognizing Red Ribbon Week. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse affect individuals, families, and communities across the nation. And whereas it is imperative that visible unified efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse. And whereas Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles. And whereas Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in communities across the nation on October 23rd to the 31st. And whereas businesses, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, and other community-based organizations will demonstrate their commitment to healthy drug-free lifestyles by wearing red ribbons and participating in drug prevention activities. And whereas Portsmouth Prevention Coalition further commits its resources to ensure the success of Red Ribbon Week. Now therefore, I, Kevin M. Agar, President of the Portsmouth Town Council, hereby proclaim October 23rd to the 31st, 2020, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage you to participate in drug prevention education activities. Not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle dated this 26th day, October 2020. So
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yakuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan? Dr. Ryan?
Unmute. But he helped the man.
Still muted.
We're still muted.
Still muted. What a thumbs up. Smoke, okay, aye, thank you, sorry about that. Screen shift, I was temporarily lost my unmute button.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Um next, we have a request approval of a resolution relating to state assistance during COVID-19 emergency. Uh Ms. Yakuza?
Yes, um I don't know if you want me to read the entire resolution. Probably the answer is no. Um so I will summarize it. It is a resolution that is recommended by the uh Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns. It's been passed by many other municipalities. And basically, it points out that there are various pots of money that are coming um from the federal government and currently are being held um at the state level. And if you scroll down to the um to the therefore clauses, uh what they're seeking is to have the, that this council calls on the governor to execute a plan for distributing um CRF funds to cities and towns, taking into account expenses incurred and revenues lost by each city and town as a result of the emergency, COVID-19. And also be it further resolved that the town of Portsmouth Council urges the General Assembly to fully fund the state education funding formula um at the FY 2021 projected levels and to support total state aid to local governments at the same aggregate levels as in FY 2020. And um so it's it's just to join with our fellow municipalities to urge that the state release the funds they seem to be holding on to. And uh also, um I believe that the funds that, uh you know, most of the funding is on the school side that we would like to see reimbursed, and they will be meeting tomorrow night um to get, I think, a fuller accounting, but it's several hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've had to spend to deal with COVID. Um primarily for air purification systems, fans, staffing, et cetera. So I would urge my fellow councilpeople to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And for a quick discussion, it it gets even dire than that, because if the governor does not release the money before December 31st, it has to go back to the federal government. So if she doesn't act quickly, nobody's going to get any money and we'll all be out.
Hey, no more wasting time here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Katzen?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next item on new business, it's a request approval to place a park bench in Mount Hope Park. Mr. Woodhead?
Council President, members of the council, can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay, thanks. What you have before you is requests from both Preston Davis and Deborah Doobie from to place a memorial bench at Mount Hope Park. There was a couple of steps that they had to go through before it came to you. The first step was to meet with myself to go down there for the location of the bench. And we went, I met with Preston Davis. We went down there, we came up with a location pretty close to what the conceptual plan was a couple of years ago. And then the next step was to get the Quinac Island Land Trust to see if they were okay with that. I contacted Chuck Allard. He had no problems with placement of the bench, as long as we didn't have any problems. And then the next step was for the council approval. So that's what's before you right now. I don't know if Deborah or Preston's online, if they want to talk any further to it. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
May I, may I, may I, may I step in for a moment and add some context, please?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Rader. Yes.
Mr. Davis came to me several months ago to ask about putting a bench at Mount Hope Park. I told him that the council in the past has established a memorial bench program for, specifically for Park Avenue. He wanted to know, and I've had several requests from other people wanting to know if they could put benches in other places on town property. And I have said to them that this is really just a Park Avenue project. If the council wants to, I've told him, I told Mr. Davis at the time that if he wanted me to, I would present to the council some sort of a, ask the council to establish some sort of policy for benches elsewhere on town property. He was persistent, and so I outlined for him the steps that he would have to take to put a park bench on town property elsewhere besides within the Park Avenue Memorial Project. Number one, I said he would have to pay for the entire bench and the DPW cost of establishing that bench. Number two, in this particular case with the Mount Hope Park, that he would have to get permission from the land trust for establishing the, installing the bench on the park. And number three, that he would have to get permission from the town council to put the bench on Mount Hope Park. Now that, and this is what, this is what's happening tonight, but I would suggest that perhaps the council might think about what we should do about others who are suggesting the placement of benches on town property other than that the Park Avenue program that we established many years ago and perhaps the Mount Hope Park. I have received, you know, and I'm looking for guidance from the council about what I should do about this. I've been sort of implementing an ad hoc policy of saying, no, you can't put a bench on town property unless you get permission for town property. And in this, in this particular case with the Mount Hope Park, we needed to have permission from the land trust as well. So when you, when you say, yes, let's go ahead and do this, I would, I would ask the council to give me some guidance about what we should do about placing benches elsewhere on town property.
Thank you, Ms. Cross. I just have any other question just before we get to you. Actually, I mean, Ms. Cross, you bring up a good point, but I think that would be a topic for another council meeting, a separate agenda for the council to take it up at another meeting. But that is a good point. It is something that, you know, we can impress, just not tonight. Ms. Abbott?
Thank you. Works for me.
Yeah, I'd like to just kind of expand a little bit on Mr. Crosby's saying. I kind, I agree with his sentiment. So first, I like the intention of a memorial bench. I love the concept, but I would prefer to see this process be guided by the town. We're trying to get funding to complete a master plan to look at all our parks and recreational properties and open spaces. You know, where's the design of the park? How does this fit in with our other properties? Like, is that where we want a memorial bench? I think we should identify, you know, the locations where memorial benches or benches period should be installed, and then open them up to the possibility of being installed as a memorial bench, and not really the other way around. Like, although I love the intention here, and I love the idea of memorial benches, we also don't want memorial benches getting haphazardly placed all over the place on town property. So I will second Mr. and Mrs. Crosby's concern and take it a step further and say that maybe this should wait until we have, you know, a plan and a vision as to where we want all our benches to be. You know, this sketch is great, but where is the design of the park that ALT spent, you know, thousands of dollars on, and is the bench on that plan? You know, I think there's a cart and horse issue here a little bit, and I appreciate the sentiment. I am supportive of the sentiment. I would love to see a memorial bench there somewhere, but I think it's the order of events here is probably a little off.
Ms. Cross, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I just wanted to explain to you what the memorial bench program is, and it was established a long time ago. And that is that we would, the town, we, the town, would pay for half of the bench, and the applicant, the person who would like to have the bench, paid for the other half. We would pay for the half of the bench, purchasing of the bench. And as you know, there are 10 of them along Park Avenue. And that we would, as a matter of fact, I've just purchased another one, number 11, which is going, which has arrived and is going to be installed this week with a plaque. And the applicant pays for the other half. We pay for not only half the bench, but for installation of the bench by DPW and installation of the plaque. The applicant pays for the plaque. Typically, they go to Arnold Art and they get the plaque, so we don't have anything to do with that. In this particular case, Mr. Davis has committed to paying not only for the purchase of the bench, but the purchase of the plaque and the purchase of, and paying for DPW to pour the slab for, for installing the bench. And so I will continue to, I've, you know, it's been a, it's been a capital improvement expenditure for a couple of years now for me to purchase two benches for our portion of the, the purchase of two benches for the Park Avenue Memorial Project. But to extend it beyond that, and I hope that that will continue. There's plenty of room along Park Avenue for a lot more memorial benches. For, but for us to be extended beyond that, I would like to have some guidance. I certainly don't want to put a thumb on Mr. Davis's request. He's really jumped through hoops to make this happen. And my intention is for, is to put him in direct contact with the person or the company that had, that is, that purchased the bench so that we have no fiscal responsibility in the chain of, you know, purchase to make this happen. But I just know that there are people out there who are going to be approaching me in the next few days or weeks or whatever. Well, what about me? Where can, why can't I put a bench up there at the park above the transfer station? So.
Yeah, Mr. Cross, I appreciate, I know we got to address this. We will address it at another council meeting.
Okay.
Because I think we've definitely touched, we're probably beyond where we should be on this agenda. I have a topic.
All right. Sorry, I've been being long-winded.
It's okay. But just, we have a motion in a second, but I do want, I do want to just touch back to Mr. Woodhead. Mr. Woodhead, you still with us?
Yeah, I'm still with you.
Okay, the location of this bench, did you, did you say that the bench is in a location that was approximately where the original designers had depicted a bench at the park?
Yeah, on the, on the original conceptual master plan that we got from the Quinac Island Land Trust, believe it or not, right where the emergency access is right there for the trucks, for the emergency vehicles, that's where they have the bench right now on their conceptual plan. I just moved it over a little bit further to the south, just so you get a better view of the bridge and stuff like that. If you turn the bench more towards, towards the east, you probably, you'd be looking at a house. So we kind of like positioned it so you could like see the bridge and see more of the water. I mean, right now, compared to the conceptual plan, there's an access going down to a living shoreline. I mean, I don't know if that's really going to happen because of all the riprap, big rocks right there to go down to a living shoreline. So I thought that was the best location compared to the conceptual plan that they had on file.
Okay, so, so I mean, I feel, I feel that the location of it is, at this point, is probably okay, considering where we are with the park, and, you know, we do have some discretion. But I do think it is a whole other topic for a whole other council meeting. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza?
I'll say aye, and I agree with Ms. Abbott's plea that we wait for a bigger plan to be instituted, but aye.
Ms. Abbott?
I just going to make a comment that because Mr. Woodhead clarified that this is where it was identified on the ALT plan, I'm going to vote aye, but I, you know, refer to my previous comments.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Katzen?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. On to correspondence.
Move to receive and place on file. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujufuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Katzen?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Future meetings, November 9th at 7:00 p.m., November 23rd, 7:00 p.m., December 14th at 7:00 p.m., and December 28th at 7:00 p.m. Before we go, I'd also like to wish everyone well next week on the election. Get everyone well, and that's all I've got for tonight. Thank you all.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
Second, and wish you all luck, and thank God it's over next Tuesday.
Everyone vote. Every vote matters.
Ms. Ujufuza?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Katzen?
Make sure you vote, and aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Rader?
Aye. Motion passes.
I believe some on this call have been voted, right, Ms. Abbott?
Absolutely. First day, baby.
We have a lot, up to like 5,000 voters or something like that.
I know. We've, I think Portsmouth is like doing the best out of all the Quinac Island communities, no? Or we were.
Portsmouth cares.
That's right.
Thank you all.